Well, good afternoon, the hour being three o'clock. I'd like to convene this regular council meeting of June the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. We have an agenda before us. I was wondering if we have any additions or deletions to or from?
Yes, your worship, find a correspondence. There's a letter, a lot to the agenda or recommend from the Innisville and District Egg Society.
And we all have copy, CEO Becker?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, thank you. Hearing no more, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Your worship, I'll adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Hill. All in favor? We have before us the regular council meeting minutes of May the twenty-fifth. Any errors, omissions, or amendments?
I'll move those minutes.
Your worship. Okay, thank you, Councillor Bates. All in favor? Carrie? We also have the agenda and priorities meeting minutes of June the seventh before us. Any errors, omissions, or amendments? Hearing, you're seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to adopt those meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Barclay. All those in favor? Carrie? We have a public hearing, item four point one on our agenda, and it's the North Area Structure Plan bylaw. I'll just go through some of the the ground rules for our public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing relating to bylaw sixteen seventy-two, two thousand and twenty-one open. And the order of this public hearing shall be introduced by administration. The introduction of the bylaw will call to hear from anyone in support of the bylaw, and then we'll call to hear from anyone in opposition of the bylaw. So administration, would you, I'll turn it over to Director Jenkins, and if you could introduce the bylaw?
Okay, so this is the update to the North Area Structure Plan. So this is an area structure plan that has been in place for the north portion of the community since two thousand and one. This update was partially undertaken to include lands that were annexed as long ago as two thousand and seven. We will, I won't go into too much detail beyond that. The project did include extensive consultation with landowners and agency stakeholders within the plan area. This included direct contact to the developer, to landowners of undeveloped land, as well as to virtual open houses. In addition, the notice of this public hearing was mailed directly to all property owners within the plan area and any adjacent property owners, including those residing in Red Deer County. The only input or contact that I did receive was regarding the public hearing was from the owner of Lund's Organic Farm, and their concerns are more related to the correspondence item that you guys will discuss later in your meeting.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Is there anyone who supports the bylaw and wishes to speak to it? Seeing none, then well, is there anyone who opposes the bylaw and wishes to speak? To council, are there any further comments from administration? See none. Does council have any further questions? Seeing none, and if not, I will accept a motion to close this public hearing.
I would so move.
Thank you, Councillor Reberger. All those in favor? Carrie? I put to council that we want to deal with the second and third readings of this bylaw at this time, or do we want to wait until seven point two on the agenda? It's also covered off there. So if you want to deal with it now, okay, okay. Consensus is we'll deal with it now. So, okay, I I open up any any discussion, any? We do have a a letter here in opposition. Hopefully, everyone it was just handed out today has had an opportunity to
Is that in opposition to the bylaw or separate? That's the agenda item that we just added, is it?
Yeah, your worship, the correspondence is not considered part of the bylaw. It is affected. North area structure plan does have affiliation with a letter of correspondence, but I advise to steer towards correspondence and for a further review there.
Okay, thank you, CEO Becker. Okay.
I'll move second reading of bylaw sixteen seventy-two, two thousand and twenty-one for discussion.
Any further discussion, any questions of administration, any?
Can I just interject, just with the the motions that are recommended within the RFD? So administration is recommending a an amendment within section eight point eight point six point three of the bylaw to reflect the potential interim use of lands within Lot A, Block eight oh two zero two six seven. So that is the future cemetery lands. So as outlined, so I can get my text. In the RFD, we were looking to add just some recognition that there could be potential for a temporary or interim use of that land prior to the future cemetery or institutional land that is indicated in the plan. So the suggested addition, it's not an additional policy point, but within that section that the following language be added, that the interim use of this parcel may be considered prior to final development as cemetery or other institutional use. If the use is deemed compatible with both the current agricultural and potential future residential setting, any use should, any use considered should be of a temporary nature that does not materially alter the land and will not conflict with the future future expansion of urban development.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to the second reading with that modification. I'm not going to try and regurgitate it.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Bates. Any questions or discussion around that amendment? Seeing none, I call to question, second reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Third reading, entertain a motion for third reading of bylaw with the amendment.
I would so move third reading as amended.
Thank you, Councillor Reberger. Further discussion? Seeing none, I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? We have a delegation. I'd like to welcome Dale Dunham from the Coffee College, please, or Coffee Cottage. Come up to the frontier, Dale, and there's a button on the mic there, and I'll just turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, your worship, council members and others. I thank you for your time and for allowing me to be here today. I'm here to speak to you a bit about history, community, inclusion, and finally, a request. For those of you that don't know, worldwide, June is known as LGBTQ Pride Month. It commemorates the Stonewall riots of nineteen sixty-nine. The riots began in the early hours of June twenty-eighth, when the police stormed through the doors of the Stonewall Inn. The Stonewall Inn served as one of the handful of places that members of the gay community could gather, embrace their whole selves. It welcomed New York City's poorest and most marginalized of the LGBTQ population. There was a history of police brutality during the ever-increasing raids in the late nineteen sixties, and the folks who gathered that night of June twenty-eighth collectively declared that enough was enough, and they fought back. In the days and nights that followed, Greenwich Village erupted in protest, violent clashes with the police. Gay rights activists led the charge, unified in their fervor to protect the rights, the dignity, and indeed, the lives of gender and sexuality nonconforming folks. What became known as the Stonewall Riots ignited community groups across the US, Canada, the world, to mobilize and demand changes to legal and moral doctrine that outlawed homosexuality. One year later, community activists in New York, Los Angeles, and San Francisco commemorated the anniversary of the Stonewall Riots with what has come to be known and recognized as the first gay pride parades. And it was also the initiation of the gay pride movement in North America. On June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, Innisville will have its first pride event. This day-long celebration will be attended by LGBTQ two S residents of Innisville and surrounding communities, along with our allies. At this event, you will more than likely see rainbows on T-shirts, buttons, and artwork, on banners, painted on people's faces, and most importantly, on flags. You might ask yourself, why would you see rainbows in such abundance on this day? Well, to answer that, we need to go back to nineteen seventy-eight, when Harvey Milk, the first openly gay elected official in California, asked a San Francisco artist by the name of Gilbert Baker to create a symbol of pride for the gay community. Gilbert wanted to create something that was positive and that celebrated our love. "A rainbow flag was a conscious choice and natural and necessary," Gilbert said. "The rainbow came from the earliest recorded history as a symbol of hope." That year, on June twenty-eighth, the eight-stripped rainbow pride flag made its debut at the San Francisco Gay Freedom Day. Since then, the pride flag has had several iterations. The six-colored version that flies each June proudly for Pride Month recognizes the lives and loves of LGBTQ people worldwide and demonstrates unity, pride, shared values, and allegiance to one another. As with flags from around the world, the symbolic usage of color on them and the colors of the pride flag are of significance and have the following meanings. Red is life, orange is healing, yellow is sunlight, green is nature, blue is harmony, and finally, violet is spirit. So I sit here today and ask the council in the town of Innisville to fly the pride flag on June twenty-sixth to show its solidarity with the many LGBTQ two S citizens of Innisville and show those who would still deny us our human rights what an inclusive community looks like and acts like. I thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions of Dale, any?
Yes, your worship. So on the delegation, so the event itself, where where is it going to be? What's it, can you give me a little bit of information on what the event's going to be consisting of?
Absolutely, councillor. The event on the twenty-sixth will be held at the Coffee Cottage and in the parking lot in behind. It starts at eleven AM and will finish approximately eleven PM. It starts off with an art exhibition called Queer From Here, which will be a series of photos and bios on L-Burtons, both past and present, that are policymakers, changemakers, politicians, musicians, people from within the community. We will be having a family barbecue where we hope many members of the community, both allies and people from the LGBTQ community, will attend. In the afternoon, we will be having speakers. I myself will be doing the welcoming. We will be having, Darren Pol will be doing a speech as well about what it is to be part of this community. We have several other members of the community that will be speaking to what it is for them to exist and to be part of the community. We have a discussion tomorrow morning, or not a discussion, but a phone call tomorrow morning with a gentleman who is hopefully going to be our keynote speaker, and he's a politician from Edmonton and was at one point the liaison for the Prime Minister for LGBTQ issues. We will then be having Curtis Labelle, who will be performing with his band onstage in the evening, and then we'll be having a few other performances. It's a free event to the community. We've had a lot of people rally around us. Many members and businesses from the community have volunteered to lend us everything from stages to equipment, food trucks, and it's been, it's been absolutely phenomenal to see that the support that the community's shown so far.
Thank you for the clarity.
Councillor Reberger?
Through to the delegation, when you say you want us to fly the flag that day, where? What, could you explain what physically, where do you want that, like, which which flag do you want us to replace? Like, the the town flag, is that the idea?
If possible, I know there are a limited number out there, but if possible, the town flag, and if, and if you accept my request, I would be presenting the town with a, as a gift, a pride flag to be able to fly that day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our delegation? Okay, well, thank you very much, Dale, and I'm certain that we'll be getting back to you fairly quickly on this, because it's not that far away. And I just have one question, and it may be it's a month-long event. Why only one day? Like, is it?
Baby steps.
Okay.
Baby steps, and with to not take up too much more of your time, the genesis of it was, is we've had a number of people who would come to the Coffee Cottage, talk about wanting to be better allies, and what information could you give to them? And then one day, one of our cooks came, sorry. Then one day, one of our cooks came in and showed me a photo of their child going to school on a Friday, where they had a pride flag painted on their face and glitter on the other side. And I thought, by them, if this young person is brave enough to go to school and show their pride, then we need to do something. So I walked out and I said to Sean, we're going to have a pride celebration. And because of COVID, we wanted to be aware that restrictions might have placed that it couldn't even happen. So we decided to go with the one day and just plan from there, hope for the best, and then, you know, scale back accordingly, depending depending on what restrictions are in place.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Guess a question through to the, our CEO, should we deal with this resolution now, or should we wait till later? Or what's the process? Or should we even have a resolution or just?
It's really in the hands of council, straight deputy mayor. Usually, when the delegation comes in, you know, a lot of time later on the agenda. Often, we try to tag it to on the agenda as a request item, but you can talk to it now, or you can put it back down on further on the agenda. It's your your wishes.
Okay, I don't see it on the agenda specific.
Correct.
So maybe we should deal with it now. Would you, you're welcome to stay, Dale, to to hear the discussion. You're you're certainly welcome. Okay, I guess I'll put it out to council, you know. I certainly entertain a a motion so that we can have a discussion around what, how we can support June twenty-sixth Pride Day. So I'll certainly entertain that motion. Oh, Councillor Hill?
Yes, your worship, I would make the motion for for opening discussion for flying the pride pride flag on June twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Hill. Okay, open for discussion.
Your worship, through to the delegation, I just want to say thank you, Dale, for all you're doing in the community, not just this, but the Lantern Festival, and you've been a great addition, you and Sean, so thank you.
Councillor Reberger?
Just a question being, is that Saturday? Is there any logistical issues with that, Mr. CAO?
Well, not really. I think it might be occurred, not because we don't want it coming on Saturday, but likely if I could go up on a Friday and come down on a Monday, perhaps.
Yeah, the event is the whole month, so I think if we got it up a day early and down a day later, it would probably be okay. Councillor Bates?
I would support the request.
Thank you. Well, I certainly to support the request, and I echo Councillor Barclay's comments about, you know, what's, you know, you've been in the community just a little less than a year, and I'll tell you, you've certainly, you know, set the bar pretty high for what what you're doing. So congratulations to both you and Sean for for what you're doing. And it's, yeah, so I fully support your your initiative on June the twenty-sixth, and maybe next year, we'll go to toddler steps instead of baby steps. So, so thank you. Any, any more discussion around, any more questions for our delegation? Okay, seeing none, I call to call, called a question to the motion about supporting June twenty-sixth as Pride Day and flying the pride flag. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
So Dale, if you just tag up with administration, you can figure out the logistics around the flag and go from there. Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is our chief administration administrative officers report. So I turn that over to our CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, worship. Report is to provide council general administrative updates, answering any of your questions regarding operations, services, and programs, follow up with a recommended motion to adopt this report. Some background is simply, the town continues to build on its health and safety program. I recently made twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth supervisors and some extras, attended a two-day session for supervisor training. The objectives covered were supervisor's role in health and safety, hazard ID, formal workplace inspection, and incident investigation. We're taking this training as we advance and getting the town as an organization working back towards the core certificate of recognition, which will occur in later part of November. This year is, we're required to do, have an external audits done by an external agency or professional. A few other items, landowner engagements recently, and also an engagement with the chamber executive. The town also has continued to build on its HR program, as we know, within council strategic plan. When your primary strategic priorities is to ensure that effect of human resource management is a concentration for the town. The town is getting some external support to build our HR foundation. And so as a result of the work we're doing with the support, even on the agenda, there is a a policy as a result of the work administration is doing, and other policies are also in play regarding HR. I will bring in that support likely on the twenty-eighth of June for a face to the name type of thing, and seeing who's really providing this important support. Few of the primary administrative focus regarding the CAO, such things as the Quake Center Multiplex Concept Plan, Placing and Safe Community Strategic Planning, Land Purchase Agreements, Ag Dev Plan, more specifically, the entity component, Health and Safety, HR, and of course, COVID remains as a priority as well. With that, council, there's any questions regarding this report or anything else associated with administration or services or programs?
Thank you, CAO Becker. Any questions of our CAO?
Sorry, your worship, I do have a couple more items I had listed, but not in my reports. One, I'll be, I'll be away vacation Friday on through the following week, and Director Jenkins will be acting CEO in my absence. Also, right now, we do have a surge at times. Today's agenda is one surge of information and action. So today's busy, but the next Monday's AMP meeting, agenda and priorities, June twenty-first, we're not seeing items right now. That's, it's not because I'm away. It's really, the surge is not happening on Monday. Just asking council for consideration for potential cancellation of the meeting. Maintain July fifth, there'll be a few items on that agenda, as we often cancel summer AMP meetings. However, we're not seeing something identified that perhaps would be brought forth as a priority next Monday, as you see something of urgent matters. So, yeah, so with that, your worship, if you could maybe have a chat as council regarding next Monday's AMP meeting. With that, if there's consideration of counseling, we would require a formal motion in that regard.
Okay, thank you, CEO Becker. I'll entertain a motion for the cancellation of next Monday, the twenty-first?
I would move that in CEO Becker's and myself's absence, you guys wouldn't have a meeting without us next week.
Okay, the motion's on the floor, discussion around that motion. Okay, seeing no questions or discussion, it looks like school's out early, so all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing nothing? Carrie? Thank you, CEO Becker. Next item is the ECC COVID nineteen verbal update.
I think it's still the motion, your worship, for the CAO report, just to formalize that, please.
Yeah, pardon me. I need a motion for information.
I'll move that we accept the CAO's report.
All those in favor? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, your worship. Just quickly, I'm not, didn't plan on speaking on all the provincial components going on right now. You're probably a more person than I am. There's a lot of things changing. I know there's a press conference today just regarding some of the vaccinations and some of the incentives to be vaccinated. I'll speak locally. My Kansas ACC is continuing to to meet every Wednesday in the morning, and I can tell you that fire training is resuming this week, as we've had some break in that, just due to the numbers and so forth. A few things happened. June twenty-seventh is bike rodeo, just to promote a local event. Also, more specifically to some of our facilities. So of course, June tenth, so activities as June tenth, the announcement of stage two opening, so just to add in, lacrosse is resuming, has resumed, pool will be fully open as of today, except for public swim. We'll continue to use sign registration for contact tracing and so forth. Minor ball has resumed their program, as well as adults' slow pitch league soccer started. Movers and groovers will start back in the LLC in July. Market of Maine starts tomorrow. And we're working on some of the messaging currently to to get this out to the community at some of our facilities. So if you haven't seen it yet, it'll be coming out shortly, I'm sure. And with that, if there's any questions?
Any questions for CAO Becker on the ECC report? I'll entertain a motion to accept his report for information.
Also move your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Barclay. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Carrie? Does this Carrie on CAO Becker for the council action report?
Thank you, your worship. It's really there for your review. If you have any questions on the status of any of these action items or anything else, please, please fire away. Administration will try to answer your questions.
Any questions from council to any of the administration staff? Councillor Bates?
Yeah, I do have one, and it's to anybody, I guess, as we have looked for more information here in the future for the heliport. And I know there was some discussion about fundraising other than, other than whatever we do. Is anybody aware of any initiatives to fundraise? Just curious.
I know that, your worship, Councillor Bates, there has been some discussion with service clubs. I know that, your worship, Counselor Bates, there has been some discussion with service clubs once specifically a while ago. For last I heard, not identified as a, so much a priority. So we have really solidified a champion for fundraising for the heliport, nor have we largely put together a fundraising campaign at this given time as well.
Okay, no, just curious if something was in the works. Thank you.
I think, counsel, it's really, you know, putting it back to counsel for the discussion in the near futures regarding that we have a preliminary number and we know it's the short of a more detailed number. The real number will come with through the market, through submissions to, to the request for proposal. With that in mind, even if it's in that range, I think the number's from 400 to 800 plus. You know, what, what is that expectation? You know, maybe just start thinking counsel on is there an expectation on fundraising, the requirements in the community? Or, or other means, what does that funding model look like as, as we get into looking at that submission through, through the market? And maybe just administration would like to be asked that question in the near future, what that expectation would be, if there's a requirement from community or not, or or solely from town or some sort of partnership. Just think that's an item we need to talk about in the, in the near future.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just have one comment. I was just in early today and a train went by on the tracks and I didn't hear a whistle. So congratulations and accolades to Stephen and his, his team for negotiating whatever he needed to do to get that, that fixed up. So I do think they're still blowing down there at the discovery crossing. So once we get that, we should be, should be silent. And we have seen some positive comments. We just got one today on the whistle cessation. So there's a number of residents that are quite, quite happy with no train whistle. So, thank you.
Your worship, just a point of clarification as well as the, I had some residents that were not quite sure as to why they were still blowing, blowing their whistle on our farthest south crossing, but seeing as that's, I believe, county, they, that's just some, just a fact that maybe should be shared as well as that. They don't start complaining that they're, they're still blowing at one of our crossings because that's.
CAO Becker?
Thanks, your worship, Counselor Hill. Director Kennedy did comment last meeting. It is Alberta Transportation's jurisdiction and there is some discussion with them to, to adjust that crossing to to non-whistle crossing. So that works still in play, but it's likely to occur in the near future.
So if nothing further, I look for a motion for, to accept the CAO's council action control report for information.
I also move.
Thank you, Counselor Reberger. I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed? None. Carried. Item 6.4, request for decision on the emergency mutual services mutual aid agreement with Red Deer County, and I invite manager Leith to the, to the microphone and it's yours.
So yeah, we received a request from, for a renewal of the emergency services mutual aid agreements from Red Deer County. So this agreement with regard to fire service operations enables us to call upon our neighboring communities to assist at larger incidents. These agreements are reciprocal and are based on our ability to provide assistance whilst maintaining our ability to still respond within our community. This agreement covers requests for fire service equipment and/or personnel, community peace officers and support of suppression or rescue operations. So the recommended motion is that council approve entering into the 2021 emergency services mutual aid agreements with Red Deer County as presented.
Thank you, Manager Leith. I'll entertain a motion for council to approve entering into the 2021 emergency services mutual aid agreement with Red Deer County as presented.
I'll move that, your worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bates. Discussion on a motion.
Yes, I do have one question. It, it says the anticipated outcome status quo, there is no changes significant come to mind or?
The main changes from is a reflection in our collaboration through our emergency management agreements. And also our peace officer communication agreements as well. So it encompasses those different agreements. And rounds that off and reflects that additional collaboration that we've entered into over the last number of years.
Okay, but we won't notice any operational differences really that would impact the public.
I don't, your worship, through to council of base, no, I don't foresee any change in our service levels.
Thank you.
Counselor Reberger?
Through to manager Leith. So this is just an open ended agreement then? There's no expiry date or it just goes on until the next time we come up with a new one?
Your worship, through to council Reberger, as far as my way, yeah. So it's open ended at this point. So is any material change?
Any further questions for manager Leith on the, the motion? Seeing none, I called the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Carried. Item 6.5, we have the Lakefoot Drive speed limits. Also, Manager Leith.
Your worship, yeah. The purpose of this is a request to look at reducing the speeds, current posted speed limits on Lakewood Drive. So the background, Lakewood Drive to Aspen Heights Way to Highway 54 and west is currently posted at 70 kilometers per hour. With the section from Aspen to 50th Street, 60 kilometers an hour transitioning to a 50 kilometers per hour for east to west. Administration has received several concerns regarding excessive speeds and potential hazards that the current posted speed limits present. Additional lighting at Aspen Heights subdivision intersection, an active speed sign and regular traffic enforcement still results, results in the concerns being raised relating to excessive speed, noise relating to the transition zones and pedestrian safety. The options proposed are detailed in an attachment with option one being the recommended. So on my recommended motion is that council approved by resolution, the reduction of speed on Lakewood Drive as recommended by administration per option one detailed on the map.
I'll entertain that motion.
I will make the motion, your worship, that we follow the recommended action of option one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Barclay. Discussion. Counselor Reberger?
I just want to say, I think this is a good idea and I think this is the right option to, this one makes the most sense to me. I think this is what we should be doing.
Just one, Counselor Bates?
Well, yeah, I, I agree with it. I, I've driven it to, to option one and it's very, very drivable. I'm just wondering, again, I wouldn't have a solution, but we might have a, a transitional noise situation right by the campground with, with what we're, we're doing here, but just point that out that there'll be some speeding up from 50 to 60 at that point.
Have we received any complaints from our patrons that in the campground? I know we received some from Aspen, Aspen Heights, but have you heard of any, any complaints coming from the campground?
Your worship, no. At this point in time, we've had no complaints regarding that at the campground. The intent was for the change at that location was one to protect the, the crosswalks at the LCC and at the seminary, those two crosswalks. And that transition point, there are trees which will shelter the noise and also the hill that is engaged at Aspen Heights, which causes vehicles to change down for that transition point. Again, we'll review it, but at this point, the answer is no.
And my second question, Manager Leith, is when would this take effect? When would the signs be changed immediately?
Your worship, subject to operations capacity to change the signs and actually put some public message out.
Okay. So will there be a, a communicate going out to our residents that we are changing the speeds there? Will there be some kind of notification?
I think that will be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. I, I see no further discussion. I called a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Carrie. We still have you on the hook, Manager Leith. We have RCMP policing strategic priorities.
So the purpose is to set RCMP strategic priorities for 2021. The background annually RCMP set strategic priorities. These priorities are led both by community and regional needs.
Manager Leith, can you just take the micro? There we go. Thank you. Apologies.
Our community safety survey in the spring of this year, although generally positive identified potential focus areas. No additional priorities for the year set in our current RCMP strategic plan are traffic safety and innovative social solutions. These are set through K division. Traffic safety is also included in the municipal enforcement work plans for 2021. So the recommended motion is that council approved by resolution, the three strategic priorities as recommended by the policing and safer community committee, which are property crime, youth engagement and a safe and respectful community.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion. The council approved the three RCMP strategic priorities as recommended by the policing and safer community committee, property crime, youth engagement and safe and respective community.
I'll, I'll move the recommended action, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Bates. Discussion. Counselor Barclay?
Yeah, so your worship through to manager Leith, so that these three priorities, like, do you have a will you be laying out a strategic plan to address them and or is that already in place? I know you're doing some of it obviously already, but.
Your worship, through to Counselor Barclay, myself and Staff Sergeant Matichuk have been tasked with putting some meat, so to speak, on the bones of each of these priorities on what they will look like. And that will be brought back to council and the policing and safer community committee.
Great, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions for manager Leith. I called a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Carried. Okay, thank you, Manager Leith.
Thank you.
Now I call upon CAO Becker to speak to 6.7 respectful workplace policy 2021 007.
Thank you, your worship. This policy draft is to replace a current policy titled the harassment and violence free working environment policy. The purpose of the policy is to ensure that all employees have the right to be treated with respect in the workplace and is committed to providing a safe workplace that is free from fear of discrimination, harassment, bullying or workplace violence. Administration is also asking council for two motions with consideration to prove the respectful workplace policy and then to repeal the current policy. The policy in itself policy outlines through the scope and the purpose that's the town of Innesville acknowledges that all employees have the right to be treated with respect in the workplace. The policy applies to all those working for, for and with the organization, including council leaders, employees and contract service providers, provides really a framework on how we treat each other and how we can expect to be treated being associated with, with the town of Innesville. It does complement council's anti-racism, anti-discrimination guidance policy that was adopted a year, just under a year ago, I'd say. My intent was not to go through all the policy and the details, but it does require that everyone is a participant. Everyone has a voice, whatever, where you sit within the organization. And all, all have the responsibility to just speak up when certain behaviors are, are noticed. So with that comes training reinforcements and to step in the right direction to ensure people have the ability to, to speak and and not be fearful of retaliation when, when that kind of a discussion is required. So with that, council asks for, if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, CEO Becker. Any questions or Counselor Barclay?
Your worship, through to CEO Becker, the, as far as the awareness through your staff, like, how, how does that get done? Is that kind of on you to get together with people or is that done through other managers?
Your worship, because of Barclay, all those, we're having a supervisor, supervisors management meeting in, in two weeks. We'll roll this out through our HR support and then we'll outline expectations, but it, it has to come through different channels because you can't just introduce it and stop. So it has to come in, in different, different ways. So start with the managers, outline expectations. I will be asking them to roll that out and engage with the staff. We'll utilize our HR supports and some of those conversations and then I'll reinforce my engagements as well. So the more we speak of it, the more it will be tested. And once people have the courage to test it, there will be positive results. So yeah, it comes in different ways.
Your worship, through to CEO Becker, maybe this is getting down too much into the weeds for council, but do you foresee people signing off that they have, you know, had the awareness training, shall we say? I know a previous employer of mine, we, we did this every year. And we were to sign off that we understand it and just so that there's accountability to at both ends.
Hey, that's, Counselor Barclay, we do that in a lot of our policies, largely of health and safety. This one, we can certainly take that advice. It's a good idea. It'll be part of our, just thought of it of our orientation package as well. But yeah, we'll certainly take that advisement to make sure people have read the policy and acknowledge that it exists. So the more we can get it out there, it's, it's one of our more key policies for, for staff. If we want to have a a healthy work, respectful workplace, we need to, we need to understand what this policy represents.
Any other questions, further questions for CAO Becker? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then that council approves the respectful workplace policy 2021 007 as presented.
I would so move that.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Reberger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Carrie. Now there's another motion recommended that council repeal the existing harassment and violence free working environment policy 2018 dash 007. I'll entertain that motion.
Your worship, I would move said motion.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. Any further discussion? Okay, I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed, seen none. Carrie. Thank you, CEO Becker, for you and your team putting this together. I know it's at times probably a a hard process and that, but so thank you for putting that together. Okay, 6.8 request for decision on the economic development entities. You have the floor, CEO Becker.
Thank you, your worship. So the purpose of this report is to provide council information and requesting direction regarding a proposed economic development entity. I'll get to the motions or recommended motions at the conclusion of the report. As the report states that one of the larger action items identified in the 2021, 20 to 26 economic development plan is to establish a formal arms length economic development entity. The plan outlines steps, things to consider and the time associated with creating an arms length entity. Administration has undertaken significant research over the last several months to explore economic development entity structures. This research demonstrates that to create an arms length economic entity, it would take considerable amount of time and require an increase in financial resources. Such things as bylaw development, corporate registration, membership attraction and financial resourcing are some of the actions associated in developing an arms length entity. The opportunity exists when you have significant disruption right now with COVID to go through a process and develop an entity. Right now, I think it's the ideal time to initiate action regarding or continued action regarding economic developments. Also, within the research that I mentioned demonstrates that economic success is realized when the community is mobilized and a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem exists. The community has achieved significant economic success over the years and the timing is perfect to strengthen the community's economic vision with defined action. Administration with acknowledgement of council pulled together a focus group to discuss the current economic reality and opportunity. This discussion was facilitated by Factor Five Group based out of Calgary. The focus group was made up of Patricia Born, Robert Bilton, Jennifer Wood and Jim Courtney. These individuals were identified by administration of having diverse backgrounds related to entrepreneurialism, social wellbeing and environment. The discussions resulted that opportunity is evident, action is required immediately and for council to move forward with the entity in the form of an advisory group with focus on economic, social and environment. Administration is recommending that council proudly attach terms of reference. As outlined within the draft, the mandate of the advisory group is to assist in the development of an entrepreneurial ecosystem that utilizes community stakeholders that promotes community economic development initiatives. Administration is recommending the advisory group entity as a starting point to strengthen the strong economic development foundation and entrepreneurial ecosystem. As the foundation and ecosystem evolves along with the required resources to serve an alternate entity model, advances and changes to the entity can be considered. The term advisory group is being defined through the IAP two, which is this was really the backbone of your public participation policy. Where it's defined as advisory groups are groups of individuals convened to meet on a regular basis over a time to provide advice to a decision maker. Administration research demonstrates is advantageous to build the economic foundation by utilizing local champions that have succeeded at a high level. Additionally, the entrepreneurial ecosystem should be influenced more so by entrepreneurs rather than non experts in that realm. It is recommended for council to appoint Patricia Born, Robert Bilton, Jennifer Wood and Jim Courtney to remain as a core leadership within the advisory group. This group to be complemented by the Innesville Chamber of Commerce representative and members of town council, supported by town administration. The importance of retaining the original four task force members is to utilize their experiences and knowledge to develop economic development foundation and influence the entrepreneurial ecosystem. Some of the anticipated outcomes from my perspective is the utilization of community leaders to strengthen the economic, social environment fabric of the community, mobilizing the community for local investment opportunities. Service level impacts may include increased levels, service levels with the existing within these, sorry, within the existing resources. Administration is recommending that the organizational structure be adjusted to be able to fulfill administrative and management requirements of the advisory group. Increased actions delivered by administration to fill the vision and strategy of the advisory group and council. Financial impacts. There are financial resources in the 2021 budget to advance this initiative with the required external supports. As an advisory group formulate strategy and action, there is a likelihood of additional financial resources required. This would be supported through business case developments to be presented to council within the next budgetary deliberation discussions. This report and what's been communicated by administration really touches on the majority of your strategic priorities as outlined in this report, and I won't read those for you. The administration's recommendation to maintain those four individuals is not to sidestep or to avoid other people that should be associated with such an initiative, but it's a starting point. It is utilizing some of the community champions. There's lots in our community. There are four that could help still build a foundational component and those faces and names will change out. Or an entity will be more formal and bigger and larger perhaps, but administration is recommending to consider these four along with the chamber appointee and two council members to to move this process forward. Administration, obviously during the brunt of the work to pull this together, supported by external, there will be some external requirements supporting administration onto the entity to build that foundational components, actions and strategy. Like the discussions I heard, council with these individuals supported by an external individual was, there's some great opportunity to build on a foundation of community economic developments. As outlined within the attached bylaw. So the terms of reference really speaks to a different model of economic development. And what we learned is largely municipalities work within the obvious, the municipal economic development model for economic development, where you might have an EDO, economic development officer, and you're trying to build out different systems for business. Whereas there is a new new means of economic development, which is building in communities across Canada. What I've understood in research largely in Ontario, Manitoba and BC slowly gaining some strides in Alberta. It's referred to as a community, sorry, community economic development model where it focuses on stability, growth and support with economics, the business side of our community with social wellbeing and environmental opportunity, stability, et cetera. So the intention through this terms of reference is to build on the CED model, community economic development and utilizing systems development to build our community in a healthy way. One thing I can add to you, council, is in our discussions, we learnt of from a local company that's social does connect into economics in the form of community safety, they have a safe community, it adds into viability and ensure some of our businesses have the ability to be considered as a safe community. It's immeasurable for site selectors. So all the other stats, not just business and build permits is that's a large part of the indicators for economic growth, but also the social component and how we're supporting our local people and other businesses is equally as important. So long winded council, there's a lot of meat to the terms of reference. And just quickly to conclude the report following your questions. Administration is asking for council to consider all three readings of the bylaw, which is referencing the terms of reference for the advisory group. That council appoints Patricia Born, Robert Bilton, Jennifer Wood and Jim Courtney to the economic development advisory group. And also points to counselors as per the recommended motion. I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you, CEO Becker. Any questions of our CEO? Counselor Bates?
Yeah, I do. One question. I'm not sure how we'll approach all these recommendations, but if we do it as like it's a package, the way I look at it. So the counselors, it makes sense to appoint them till the end of this term. The the members of the advisory group, are they like? Is there a term there or have they consented to a specific period of time or?
Your worship, Counselor Bates, there is a term. I know administration, we reviewed it at the last minute, I did put in a term, if you could just bear with me.
I didn't look for it in there. And they've all, they've obviously all consented to that.
Yes, with the understanding that life happens and if this is new, if the demands are high, then then of course with any committee, it's there's that opportunity, but right now I'll basically give the head nod to be part of this. I'll continue to look at maybe, would you mind, maybe Vanessa?
Thank you.
Two years? So yeah, so nineteen, so two years based on, I'd suggest on the upcoming October organizational meeting, so two years from that point.
CEO Becker, you're suggesting that we have three motions here or like the three readings and then a motion to appoint the advisory group and then another motion to appoint a counselor or
Yeah.
Or the two counselors?
Your worship, the structure of the motions, if you're to consider them is to confirm first that you wish to have an advisory group within the format of the terms of reference. So if that, if you do agree with that through three motions through bylaw, then I'd suggest that we move on to the to the pointing of the four and then of course for your discussion regarding appointing two council members, so three different motions.
Okay, thank you very much, CEO Becker. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for first reading of bylaw sixteen seventy-three, twenty twenty-one economic development advisory group terms of reference.
I will move your worship first reading of bylaw sixteen seventy-three, twenty twenty-one for the economic development advisory group.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Barkley. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call to question. All those in favor? Carrie. I will now entertain a motion for second reading.
I would move we give the bylaw second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Reberger. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Now, I look for a motion to move.
Proceed to.
Proceed to. Language is important.
That we proceed to third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Bates. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carrie. Now I need a motion for third reading.
Your worship, I would give third and final reading to bylaw sixteen seventy-three dash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hill. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, seen none. Carrie. Okay, moving on to, I'll entertain a motion that council appoints the advisory group members. Patricia Born, Robert Bilton, Jennifer Wood and Jim Courtney to the economic development advisory group.
I would so move that motion.
Thank you much, Counselor Reberger. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed, none. Carrie. Now moving on to the third motion, a counselor appoint counselor blank and counselor blank to the economic development task force with the term ending October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So a process question to our CAO. We need a discussion around who's going to fill the blanks, right? Do we have that before the motion or?
Yeah, obviously, your worship, I can set you up to follow procedure by law very well. But yeah, I ask you to consider having the discussion who would be appointed before you make that motion.
Okay. So I will open it up for discussion. Counselor Hill and Counselor Barkley.
Yeah, it's a little bit easier, your worship. I'm not eligible for something like this, but definitely would have liked the opportunity, but I'm out on this one. So between you four.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. Now Counselor Barkley.
I would like your worship to I guess volunteer to be on this. I've been a part of it already. It's very interesting. I've also enrolled in the SFU CED program. So I've been in that a couple of months and like to be able to apply that to this because that's what it's all about, so.
Counselor Bates, thank you.
I was actually going to suggest that Counselor Barkley be on it because I do know she's been part of it. I find myself fairly busy, so we'll just see what else. And I think another positive thought would be
Danny.
Counselor Harrison possibly too, because of your involvement in Cape and I I see more future in this than Kate, to be honest with you. That's just a personal opinion.
Yeah, I just want to give the opportunity to the other counselors, so I.
I moved that nomination cease because we've got two volunteers.
He knows the procedural bylaw. Thank you, Counselor Reberger. I'll certainly let my name stand as a and I fully support Counselor Barkley too. She's been involved right from day one on this and she's put a lot of time and effort and diligence into it. So I, and she's got the history of the group, so I you know, we don't want to lose that continuity as we go forth. So I fully support you, Counselor Barkley, and you're moving forth with this advisory group, so.
And your worship, I support you too, because I think I had Vanessa send the committee list today and I think you've only got two committees, so you need to work a lot harder than you have been.
Okay, thank you.
Just kidding.
Yeah, so I guess with that, now we can move to the motion, right? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that council approves Counselor Barkley and Counselor Harrison to the economic development task force with the term ending October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. May I have that motion?
Your worship, I would make that motion. That counselor, council appoints Counselor Barkley and Counselor Harrison to the economic development task force, the term ending October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hill. Okay, any further discussion or clarifications? Seeing none, I call to question. All those in favor of that motion? Opposed, seen none. Carrie. Thank you, CEO Becker. Both. I see Sandra walking to the microphone. You're going to present the age friendly community committee today.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm here today to present to council the age friendly community committee applications that have been attached for your consideration. The recommended motion is that council review the attached applications and appoint two community members at large for representatives of community organizations and one member of council to the age friendly community committee. The background on this is that on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, FCSS staff presented to council an administrative review detailing the recommended actions and resources required to implement the age friendly final report that was presented to council in October of two thousand nineteen by the members of the age friendly ad hoc committee. Two of the recommendations of the final report included Two of the recommendations of the final report included that the town of Innisfail commit to becoming an age-friendly community by 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 passing an age-friendly resolution and that the town of Innisfail develop an age-friendly community committee to replace the, at that time, the current Age Friendly Action Plan Steering Committee. In November of two thousand twenty, a community supports an age-friendly facilitator was hired, which was my position, to support the work of making Innisfail more age-friendly and implementing the above noted actions. On March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, mayor and council passed a resolution and adopted bylaw sixteen sixty-three, twenty twenty-one to create the Age Friendly Community Committee. The bylaw outlines the mandate, membership, operation, and duties of the committee. The committee will consist of one counselor, four representatives of community organizations, and two members at large. The committee will be tasked with developing an action plan to explore projects that will advance the eight dimensions of an age-friendly community, including outdoor spaces, recreation and buildings, transportation, housing, social participation, respect, and social inclusion, civic participation and employment, communication and information, and community support and health services. Anticipated outcomes is that an Age Friendly Community Committee is established and acts as a forum and catalyst for community collaboration around the objectives of making Innisfail more age-friendly. The committee will be tasked with developing a community action plan to outline specific tasks and initiatives to achieve the committee's goals and council's strategic goals. The committee will be able to form various subcommittees to work towards different facets of age-friendliness and will act as the connection between council and community actions and initiatives. Service level impacts is that administrative support from the community supports an age-friendly facilitator as part of that role. Financial impacts is that each administrative support of the age-friendly community through staff, particularly the age-friendly facilitator, and the budget to support age-friendly initiatives and work, including coalition activities, community forums, events, and activities, including intergenerational connections as identified by the committee and approved through council. Strategic plan alignment is that the proposed recommendations align with the town of Innisfail's strategic plan in promoting well-being of residents and access to social amenities in Innisfail. This includes creating a plan to address the challenges, barriers, and gaps in availability, accessibility, and awareness of services for all citizens, including older adults and seniors. Public engagement and community strategy, communication strategy, is that the public will be informed via a press release distributed to media and posted to social media and the town of Innisfail's website as applicable. So again, I'm here to, with a recommended motion, that council review and appoint two community members at large for representatives of community organizations and one member of council to the Age Friendly Community Committee.
Okay, thank you, Sandra, and I will entertain that motion, and then we can have a discussion and questions.
Yeah, your worship, the report is for public, the appointments would occur through dialogue in camera due to the sensitivity of the applications.
Okay, I guess we'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report for information, and we'll deal with the appointments in camera. And yeah, thank you, CEO Becker. Any questions around the committee? We're not going to let you off that easy. Yeah, any questions or comments, excuse me, for for Sandra? I guess we are going to let you off that easy. Thank you very much. Okay, I turn the floor over to Director Jenkins, looking for a decision on the North Area Structure Plan bylaw sixteen seventy-two, twenty-one.
I think you did it.
Pardon?
Yeah, I think you did all that we needed for.
Yeah, I see that on my notes here. It's been removed. Thank you very much, Counselor Reberger, for reminding me that I should read my notes. Well, we'll still turn it over to Director Jenkins on the Facility Booking and Allocation Policy, two thousand twenty-one zero zero six, Camping on Town Premises Policy, two thousand twenty-one zero zero five.
Okay, so we're looking to present the updated facility booking and allocation policy and a new camping on town premises policy for approval. These policies have been reviewed and created to provide greater clarity and flexibility for the operation of our recreational facilities and spaces. These policies were reviewed as draft by both the Community Services Standing Committee and at a council A N P meeting in May. So the facility booking and allocation policy and various components specific to priority allocation, subletting by user groups, and the timing of facility availability have been discussed many times over the past few years with delegations and various reports coming through council. The proposed update seeks to provide greater clarity for administration and users on how bookings are prioritized and processed. One of the key items being subletting, so subletting refers to the practice of block bookers renting excess field or ice time to other users as opposed to turning that booking back to the town. The current policy that we do have does not permit subletting, although that was the practice for some time. The new policy strengthens this provision, block booking, excess time leads to inefficient use of the facility and diminished control for the town over how services are provided in the community. Discussions within Innisfail Minor Hockey have indicated that they are no longer interested in the ability to sublet. And where a facility booking is canceled within, it's actually the two-week minimum cancellation period, the town and the town is able to rebook the space. The original booker would not be charged for that for that booking. The new policy highlights the prioritization of how space is booked when multiple groups request a space. So prioritization is as followed with local youth, followed by adult or local adult, non-local youth, non-local adult, commercial, and then private bookings. Seasonal schedules have been removed from the policy and are now more flexible to allow for conversations and cooperation amongst user groups with the C A O or designate having the final determination. This can address the shift from ice to dry surface users in the spring. And conversations with Innisfail Minor Hockey, as well as Innisfail Minor Lacrosse have indicated support for this and that there is an ability that minor hockey could end their use of the red surface in early March if provincial tournaments are not being hosted. And this is information that they should be able to pass on to the town by the early, early January each year. So we're able to to start those conversations. The second policy is the Camping on Town Premises Policy. So again, going back as far as June two thousand and nineteen, council requested that administration prepare guidelines for charging a fee to facility and sportfield users who request camping on town premises. Our current parks by law prohibits camping unless given specific authorization by the facilities manager. So this proposed policy provides a guide for when, where, and with what restrictions camping can be accommodated. So primarily within that camping policy, camping on town premises is only allowable in association with an active booking of one of the facilities, be it the curling rink or the arena, swimming pool, or ball diamonds. A permit does have to be requested and achieved through the town and will allow that, I guess, the monitoring and some measure of control over that function. So we are looking to council for three motions, one to approve the new facility booking and allocation policy, one to rescind the existing facility booking policy, and then another to approve the Camping on Town Premises Policy.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins. Questions? Director Jenkins? Okay, I'll move to the first motion, then I'll entertain a motion that council approves the Facility Booking and Allocation Policy of two thousand twenty-one zero zero six as presented. Counselor Barkley?
Yeah, we'll move that, your worship, followed by a question, please.
Thank you, and.
And through to Director Jenkins, with respect to the deposit, I think it was fifty percent security deposit for casual users. Would a casual user be like the, a chamber who maybe uses a facility once in a while for? I don't know, a symposium or, you know, they book the arena once a year for a trade show. I know that there, I think there were some kind of concerns in the past year where maybe it was before that now with COVID, but prior to COVID with, you know, booking and kind of being an in-town organization that books our facilities quite regularly about coming up with a fifty percent deposit and.
So they would be a, a one-off, a special event booking would be the the typical focus for that. So we would technically, there would be a deposit required unless waived by the C A O or designate, I guess, would be the the option there. We do, we have been trying to get those deposits just because it's often difficult if if that damage does occur. But again, it could be a request made through administration.
To supplement Megan's response, council, I think confusion was just the application of the policy. We were starting to really use the policy as it was outlined, and it created confusion of why are you applying the policy now? So I think special circumstances, special arrangements, we can certainly look at that. But intention would be to apply the policy as it reads unless there's a, some sort of conversation that we can find merit in not requiring a deposit.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the motion, the Facility Booking and Allocation Policy? Okay, if not, I called a question. All those in favor? Opposed, Carrie? Moving on to the second motion, now we have to rescind policy two thousand sixteen zero zero seven. I'll entertain a motion to rescind that policy.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Bates. Any further discussion on on rescinding that? Okay, I call to, I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed, none, Carrie? And the third motion will be, I entertain a motion for a council to approve the Camping on Town Premise Policy, two thousand twenty-one zero zero five as presented. Thank you, Counselor Reberger.
I would move that.
Thank you, Counselor Reberger. Any discussion on Camping on Town Premise Policy?
Do have one. I think I did ask the last time if we were looking at any, any fire regulations. It got in there. I'm sorry, I didn't read it. I admit it.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Bates. That begs the question, open fires, is that like any open fire? Like if it's in like a barbecue, we, they could have that.
Yeah, barbecues are those, like the propane fire pits, but not open wood fires.
So I could have my pit as long as it's fired by propane. I'm okay. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Jenkins. Okay, no further questions. I would call to question. All those in favor? Opposed, nothing, Carrie? Yeah, okay. Eight point one, request for decision, Innisfail Public Library Appointment of Library Financial Review Auditor. Are you presenting, Megan, or Director? Oh, Erica? You have the floor.
Thank you, worship. So the purpose of this report is to have council appoint the town of Innisfail's auditor to complete the town of Innisfail Library Board's audit retroactively for two thousand twenty. So in two thousand twenty, administration, along with the Innisfail Library Board, came to an agreement that the town's auditor, B D O Canada L L P, would take over completing the Innisfail Library Board's annual audit. And the Innisfail Library is requesting a motion from council identifying this change of auditor to take to the library board meeting later this month. Actually, I think it's tomorrow. The two thousand twenty audit was completed in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-one and was well within budgeted amounts. So the recommended motion that we're asking for is that council approves the board decision to use B D O Canada L L P as auditors for the town of Innisfail Library Board Financial, starting in two thousand twenty. I worked with Tara and that's what she wanted, so.
Okay, I will entertain that motion. Counselor Hill?
Your worship, I would make said motion and as well have a question to follow.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hill, and you have the floor.
So just given, given a little bit of background, Erica, on this particular, for the motion, is it, was this just for the town to try to help support the library? Is that part of the reason? Or what was, what's the, what is the, the reason for the change, I guess?
So every year, when we do our own financial audit, the auditors do what they call a slam amount for the amount of money we give to the library because they can't audit how they spend those funds. And we have a slam amount that's very limited on, before it becomes too much and becomes a problem, right? So one of the reasons to start was if our auditors can do a full audit, then they would no longer have to slam that amount. And then it frees up money for, I think it's saving the library around four thousand dollars a year by us taking it over, so.
Yeah, so essentially a win-win for everyone then.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Just want to make sure I understood what I was making the motion on. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Reberger. Okay, that answered one of my questions was, so the town now pays for their audit?
The town does pay for it, yes.
Because it went up six hundred dollars from last year.
For the library?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just that that was. I just happen to know that it was higher than.
And I do think we do get a better deal on that portion of the audit, simply because they take, they have the rest of our audit as well. And they also do our L A P P audit and the F C S S audit as well, so.
So as part of the library trustee training I took, this is a requirement of the Library Act that the town appoints the auditor, whether, whether, who, it didn't matter who was paying for it. But that was, that was a step that was being missed in the past. And then this is effective until we wish to change our auditor, since we don't have to make this motion every year, just ask them aid until there's a change. That's the way they explained it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, Carrie, thank you, Ms. Vickers. Operational Services, who's, who's presenting? Is that Megan for?
Yes, I've been tagged to to do these reports in Stephen's absence. Yeah, so the first item is Fifty Street Landscaping Phase Two, so the award of the construction contract. In December twenty nineteen, administration provided council an update on the overall concept design for the Fifty Street Gateway Landscaping Project. The project was broken into four phases with the first phase being completed in two thousand twenty, which included the tree planting and pedestrian walkway along the Fifty Street North Service Road. The second phase is to include the installation of seven planters along the north side of Fifty Street between Forty Second Ave and Forty Fourth Avenue. The request for quotes for this project closed on June third with two contractors submitting bids. Bid values do not include G S T or contingency. A bid evaluation was completed by Tagish Engineering and nothing appeared unbalanced. Tagish and the town have both worked with Apollo Landscaping, which is the the lower bid in the process, and recommend award of this contract to Apollo Landscaping. So the project value is. So the project value is over the budgeted amount of $110,000. But additional funds are available from the Recreation and Culture Reserve. The reserve balance for the Rec and Culture Reserve after this project will be approximately $698,000. So at this time, we're looking for a motion to approve the award of the 50th Street Entry Landscaping Phase Two Contract to Apollo Landscaping in the amount of $114,290 to be funded from the Recreation and Culture Reserve.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion and then we can have a discussion and questions, so. We'd like to make that motion that we approve the award of the 50th Street Entry to Apollo Landscaping for $114,290 to be funded from the Recreation and Culture Reserve Fund.
I'll make that motion to get it on the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Bates. It's open for discussion. Question?
I do have one question too. Is there a warranty on some of the plantings? And I did notice the other day, we might have a couple claims.
Yes, so the, there have been, I think there's about half a dozen of the trees that were planted last year that have already been identified and Apollo will be replacing those under the warranty.
Thank you.
Counselor Barclay?
Your worship, through to Director Jenkins, I, this is, I think about 20% over, including the contingency of the original budget amount. I know there's a lot of money out there right now from other levels of government as far as infrastructure and stuff, and I think people are, landscapers are extremely busy. Has that kind of played into why this came in? Above, do you know, or?
I'm not sure. I don't have that, that detail.
Maybe Counselor Hill, did you have a comment or? No? Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought I heard you say something.
I would make a comment, Counselor Barclay, I do, I do, I can attest that a lot of the prices have gone up, especially for just strictly materials alone. So that could play a big factor in the, what potentially could have been not budgeted originally.
Your worship, through to, I guess, the rest of council, I'm just curious if you think maybe to do a pause with materials, but I mean, we're seeing that at a lot of things, right? The material costs have gone up, maybe supply chain issues more so than manufacturing issues, but you know, is that, does that create a reason to pause this until maybe things settle out a little bit more? Or are we happy with where this is at?
Counselor Reberger?
I wouldn't say I'm happy with where we're at, but I think we should proceed with it. Because this is one of our priorities is to, we identify this, the entrance to town is, and you know, I think we should stick to our strategic plan and continue on with this project.
Counselor Bates and then Counselor Hill?
So one question I have when I look at the contingency, at this point of the project, would we need to keep that much contingency? Because it's fairly well along the way.
So at this point, the motion is just for those construction costs. So the, there's estimated contingency, and I know in some of the other projects, there's, they've been under budgeted. So they, they do have some, some room as well as within our general engineering budget. So at this point, the motion is just for the contracted price to Apollo.
The budget was every, all in was 110? Like contingency and everything?
I believe that is all that's in the capital, capital line for that.
So the engineering has been spent or most?
Yeah, most of the engineering has already taken place.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, I was just wanting to support with the motion to advance. Yes, it is unfortunately a few more dollars than we were anticipating, but I, I do think it's imperative to, to keep this on track, so to advance.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I just have a question for Director Jenkins, and it's regarding the, the materials. Like is it's, are these cement or are they exposed rock? Or I, I couldn't get it off the diagram. It's, it's pretty, pretty small.
I think you can roll up there. I believe they are actually like allen blocks. They are, so they are the, the sort of interlocking retaining wall blocks. I think it's on there. I don't know if you can zoom in enough, but yeah, on our planting detail, they did indicate, I saw it somewhere.
Okay.
Oh, in the next, yeah, on there. So there's, yeah, allen block retaining wall. Yeah.
Thank you, and second question is, what's our annual cost for plants? Is that something that?
Like overall?
Well, no, we have to maintain this down the road. What would be, i- is there a landscape plan for planting? This is just the construction. Is there something that, what plants are we putting in there?
Yeah, so this does include the, the plantings there.
See that.
And most of those are, are perennials, so it's a mix of day lilies and, and things that should.
Okay, thank you very much. I.
Lower maintenance than, than having to be replanted every year.
Yeah, thank you, Director Jenkins. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. So I, no further discussion, I'd call to question, a vote on that motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Carried.
Okay, yeah. So back on May 25th, the Innisville Kinsman Club President Tim Mainesgoff presented to council as a delegation to review the proposed disc golf, disc golf course, sponsorship status, maintenance expectations, and to request authorization to build the course on town land in the Centennial Park area. Council did not express any concerns at that time and directed administration to formalize an agreement to be presented back to council for approval. So that is the intent of this report. There is a very basic agreement laid out to be entered into between the town and the Kinsman Club, basically outlining where the course will be outlined, that all items installed under this agreement will become property of the Town of Innisville, and it shall be the responsibility of the town to maintain the items supplied as per the agreement. If at any time the installation constitutes a safety concern, it shall be removed without notice to the donor. The town reserves the right to relocate the installation if deemed necessary. If it is subject to vandalism, the town shall not be responsible to replace the damaged item. And again, if the installation becomes unsightly, the town reserves the right to remove it. The installation will be in a place for a minimum of 10 years or the useful life of the installation, whichever is younger. Upon expiry of the 10-year period, the town may remove the installation. Or upon this expiry, the Kinsman will be contacted and given first option to renew the installation in accordance with policy in place at that time. The town will provide basic maintenance to the grass and grounds along the course. The Kinsman will be responsible for the maintenance of all baskets, platforms, signage, and any other components of the installation as outlined on Schedule A. And should the town property containing an installation be redeveloped or sold, the town will cons, will consult the Kinsman and make its best effort to relocate the installation. So most of the bulk of that agreement is comparable to our memorial bench and donation policy. And yeah, should, should serve to at least outline those basic expectations on both sides for the use of the disc golf course. So yes, I guess we're looking for a motion to approve the agreement. Yeah, in accordance with the attached agreement.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion. Counselor Hill?
I would make that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. Discussion. Seeing nothing, I called a question. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Carried. Okay, moving on to correspondence and information. Comments on our correspondence?
Your worship, I have one. It's kind of been baby steps, but if we look at the Policing and Safe Community Meeting, May 27th, I think it was item four, that the Police and Safe Community Committee recommends to council, RCMP may be maintained as the Town of Innisville's policing services provider. I think that was a bit of a, not exactly what, good old Zooms, it's hard to get everything together, what everybody's thinking. But I think it, it reflects back to a whole pile of these that we see, support for the RCMP from various communities before, after, and, and the ones that we see here now, so. The discussion, well, it emanated here and then it, I think it went to the committee and certainly they support the RCMP. So we should, I think, direct administration to draft a letter that we support the RCMP. I looked at some of these others and I don't know that we want to specifically single out criticism of, of the government initiative, but I at least want to, I think it was unanimous at the committee that we support them, and I support them. For discussion.
Counselor Barclay?
Yes, your worship, I would be supportive of what Counselor Bates just mentioned.
So I'll make a motion that we ask administration to draft a, a letter reflecting that, that we are, we as a community are happy with the RCMP's performance and aren't looking for an alternative. Is that, is that enough for us to vote on here?
Just questioning.
CA Obecker?
Just to who?
Well, I guess to, to the premier with copy to our MLE and. General, sorry, copy, copy the premier in our, in our MLE. I think we've kind of done similar, similar. Thank you.
Just a comment on the motion. I think the letter should come from the mayor and council, not, not from administration, like. That, I got the impression that from your motion that.
No, no, that they drafted for us, but.
But it's signed by the mayor.
Mayor and council.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarity.
Yeah, and specifically the Policing and Safe Community Committee recommends to council. Yeah, specifically, so yes, should come from council.
Okay, no further discussion. Then we have the motion on the floor. Everybody understand the motion? I call to question. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Seeing none? I do have a question on the letter that we received from a resident regarding the proposed archery range. How did you want to handle that, CA Obecker? Like, is this just for information? Be part of our package because we received it before the meeting today. I know it came late.
I'll speak to and ask Megan to chime in, your worship. So a letter came in today, actually probably Friday, but on my desk, it's coming from the Innisville District Egg Society. Just recommending, or just statements regarding the proposed archery range relocated on future cemetery land. Administration has applied the town's own policies on development permitting, and, and they're going through that process. And Megan, would you kind of speak to that process even on our own as, as owner? We're still required to go through that permitting process and, and that engagement when that, when that occurs?
You bet. So I'll give council a little bit of background. Following the article that, in the paper, that was about the archery range a few weeks back, I was contacted by one of the rest residents quoted in, in this, in the letter. As well, last week, Mr. Lund, as he was planning on attending the public hearing, under the impression that that was a part of the approval process for the archery range. I guess where the archery range stands, after the last time we spoke with council, we discussed the lease rate and some of the maintenance obligations. So that has all been put back to the Fish and Game Club, and we have not heard back from them at this time. But in that response did outline that there, there is still a development permit process that even though the town is the town, we still do have a land use bylaw that has a process for how developments and land uses are, are treated on properties. So that, so the cemetery land is zoned within our reserved for future development district. That district does give MPC a fair bit of flexibility in terms of what can be approved. Essentially, there's a discretionary use that is any use that in the opinion of the Development Authority will not materially alter or be a detriment to future urban expansion. However, council does know that any discretionary use, you then do have appeal provisions that run in association with that. So as well as that does provide the opportunity to, to have public input onto a process. So both the, the Fish and Game Club and the, the individuals that have expressed their concern are aware of that process. And that if the archery group does choose to, to move forward, that yeah, there would still be that, that permit process that would invite feedback from those adjacent landowners.
Just a question then, Director Jenkins, this letter would be introduced as an exhibit at MPC? Much the same?
I likely would, just because we, you know, we are aware as the property owner that there is, that there has been concerns expressed and would be an opportunity to, you know, with MPC, we've had conversations about public participation and when and where and who we notify. So these property owners have expressed the, the desire to be informed of how that process moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, so will make contact with the egg society, indicate that this letter will be applied to the process unless they wish to do something different.
Okay, thank you very much, CA Obecker. Any other? Counselor Bates?
So on that same subject, so would it be part of the process for us to forward these concerns to the Fish and Game folks? And, and as I read it, I mean, people make assumptions. I assumed that their design would be such that there wouldn't be errant arrows heading, heading on to other people's property. That should be almost never, like I'm, I'm sure there's always that unforeseen circumstance, but they seem to be concerned that it's going to be a regular occurrence. And I, I can't imagine that they would set that up in any way that that would happen on, on any kind of a regular basis. So I, I almost think we need to contact Fish and Game, make sure that they know that some of these concerns are there. And a lot of it is just housekeeping and not, not allowing garbage and foodstuffs.
CA Obecker?
Yeah, your worship, I think it'll be put back to administration and then onto MPC for that process. We won't interfere, but we'll do that as a typical administrative process. And we would narrow that down in our administrative work with recommendation onto MPC. So I think MPC would be in their jurisdiction to, to ensure some of these items would be spoken to or addressed at that time.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. There's no more, if there's no more questions or? If there's no more, if there's no more questions or concerns on the correspondence and information, I'll entertain a motion to accept his information.
I would so movingly accept the correspondence for information.
Thank you, Councilor Reberger. I call to question, all those in favor? Opposed, none, carried? Okay, we're on to council reports, and we'll start with Councilor, Councilor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. Rather convenient. Yeah, I don't have too terribly much to report. Obviously, you know, with our quite action-packed agendas, it's quite uplifting to continuously see people trying to make an impact positively to our community with events or trying to grow our attraction basis or amenities. Yeah, it's just, it's just a really good feeling seeing our, our community bounce back from some fairly dark times and, and advancing. So just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Councilor Hill. Councilor Bates?
Okay, so I participated in the multiplex discussion last week. Watched another semi-virtual grad, this one out of Cochrane. You have to hand it to those kids, being resilient in all this, and thinking last year that their grad, their grad this year would be normal, and actually, if they, unfortunately, two or three more months, and it might have been. This week, tomorrow, I have MPC and the multiplex sustainability discussion. One thing I didn't see on the future events was a rare event, PCPS has one of their meetings next Thursday, and I'm supposed to, that's one of the things I inherited here in the last few months. And speaking of warranties, I saw, I've noticed it several times and just keep forgetting it. The wayfinding sign at 56th, when you're coming from Lakewood from the west, the, the sea and campground seems to only be halfway on there now, and those were very expensive signs, and I'm sure that should be fixed by them. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bates. Councilor Barkley?
Thank you. So last week, I had an engagement with Chamber and town administration over with the economic development model that was proposed today. Also, we had the multiplex discussion last week, and another one again tomorrow, MPC tomorrow, and the Chamber Thursday. I also mentioned this to CEO Becker, but just so the rest of council knows, I received a text and a voicemail from a resident who was extremely happy over the service from operations in, in their neighborhood. They were cleaning up kind of a, a walkway that I, I think has been a bit of a contentious issue the last few years with weeds and whatnot, but they were over the moon happy with the two people that were there doing the work, how industrious they were, and they were polite and friendly, and and so I just wanted to pass that on to everybody, so that it's always nice to hear good news, because we don't always hear good news, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barkley. Councilor Reberger?
Okay, last week I attended the multiplex update and the candidate planning. We've now put that over to Ken for promotion, so I've seen it on Twitter and various places, so. We're just working now to finalize the scavenger hunt items. I'm trying to influence them into a couple harder ones that you might have to use your brain, not just go look for something, so. We'll see. And then coming up, I have a joint use meeting on Wednesday, which hasn't happened in the two years because of COVID, and so I think it's just a touch base kind of thing for. We'll see, and I see the community services bailed. We don't have to do that, so. And then I will be away from the 20th to the 25th inclusive, and Councilor Barkley and Harrison have agreed to cover my meetings for me. That's all.
Thanks, Councilor Reberger. I also had a very quiet week. I just to comment around the lake, with these temperatures being 25 or 30 degrees, it's become quite a, quite a swimming hole, and on the weekend there, thanks to the garbage cans, there was very little gar, little garbage that was left, actually, actually out, but does protective services or someone stop in, and it's an education about talking about, you know, if you have garbage, if you have a McDonald's bag that you take it home with you or put it in the can. And I, I see parking is becoming a bit of an issue down there, not on the street, but within the the boat launch, like there, a number of vehicles, and there doesn't seem to be any kind of, well, there isn't any organization. The first guy gets in, he sets the tone for the rest. And there, like yesterday, when it was 30 degrees out, it was, it was quite a, quite a show. And it becomes a safety issue, because when you come out of the boat launch and you come up the little bit of a, an incline there, you got to make a turn one way or the other. So the, you know, there is a safety issue with other cars parked, so. You know, maybe if we could take a look at, you know, some parking restrictions along 56th. I'm not saying the whole street, but maybe within whatever the regulations are, the 15 meters within the, the actual intersection itself. And if there's something that you could maybe look at within the boat launch area itself, because it is pretty, particularly when the heat's like this, there's kids running around. Like, there must have been 30 kids down there yesterday jumping off the dock, and so it's quite a, yeah, so that's about all I had. Thank you.
Sorry, your worship, can I just add something to that? I had a discussion yesterday with a couple people, kids go down to Dodds a lot, kayakers, young family, a little bit of a concern with people fishing, and, you know, they're quite young kids, so they're just learning to kayak and, and maybe not quite sure how to go or where to go, and, you know, the line is being cast, and a little concern with someone getting hooked in the kayak, and, you know, just because his counselor, his worship says, you know, that it's so busy down there right now, so I'm, I'm not sure how that can be kind of looked at it as well, and, and parking was brought up, too. You know, having to walk down the street with four kayaks, like carrying the four kayaks, because the parking in the front is jammed up, and.
Yeah, thank you. And there's also, you know, and we do have the boating allowance of one boat, and there, there were motor boats that were, you know, they come and go around the dock, and there's young kids, so maybe it's just an education thing, if someone can stop in and talk about, you know, distances and that kind of thing, so it's, so I just bring that, that up to Director Jenkins.
And your worship, that was one more thing that these people brought up to me yesterday was the last time they were down kayaking, I believe there was two motor boats in, in the water. So I'm, I'm not sure who polices that or looks after it, but.
CEO Becker or Director Jenkins, would you like to address that?
Sure, so we can't actually go out and, and limit the boats. And again, RCMP would be if there was, you know, somebody drinking on a boat or, or not being in accordance with their operating a watercraft. Yeah, we can look at some options probably for parking. I also had a call earlier today, actually, about concerns about the fishing and people kind of tramping around in the, in the reeds around the shoreline, so whether we need to look at maybe designating areas where you are fishing and maybe areas where we encourage you not to be fishing right by where they're putting the boats in the water, that, or jumping off the dock, that kind of thing, so. Yeah, I will have a discussion with Steve, and we can, can look at some options there.
Good, thank you very much. So that concludes our, our council reports. Vanessa, do we have anybody on Zoom here that would like to ask any questions, or anybody, please raise your hand if you do? No? No? Okay, well, I guess that brings this part of the agenda to, to an end. We've covered off the upcoming events, so I will entertain a motion to, to go in camera.
Your worship, I would make a motion to move in camera.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hill. We are now in camera, and take a five-minute break. Well, we better vote.